City Council meeting of November 3rd, 2025 to order. This is our regular meeting. Sarah, would you please lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Bochum?
Here.
Goodlow?
Here.
Lowquist?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
And just, yes, Councilmember Thompson is ill tonight, and so can we get an excused absence for him?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to excuse Josh Thompson for this evening's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
I two vote aye, that motion is approved. And just for the audience's sake, we had previously excused Rich Elliott and Delano Palmer from tonight's meeting, so we are down to four tonight. And so, next item, Native American Heritage Month is in our packet. And I guess, following Mayor Elliott's lead, we won't be reading that. There are no awards or recognitions, correct? So we are at approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I two vote aye opposed, that motion carries. The consent agenda is before us.
Move to approve consent as presented.
Second.
Motion and second to approve consent as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I two vote aye opposed, motion carries. Okay, we are at petitions, protests, and communications. This is natural gas, public awareness, and damage prevention program.
While Darren gets us set up, we, I would just like to introduce, we have a natural gas utility that is subject to a tremendous amount of regulation. We work very, very hard to meet all the compliance requirements to make sure we have a safe system to operate. So Darren and his team do a lot of work behind the scenes, and they have requirements to help educate the community, and so we thought this would be a great opportunity for Darren to talk a little bit about our natural gas utility and a little bit about the safety program.
Thanks for queuing that up while I got the tech part going. Good evening, Council. Darren, you see, I work for the city gas utility here on staff. And just a brief presentation, just to give you a little bit of an overview informational on our public awareness program. Before I get too deep into it, just a little, little bit about the gas utility here. It was established in 1956. Currently have about 5,200 customers, 140 miles of mainland, and then our territory, which is often not fully understood, is very significantly, I guess, larger than city limits in UGA. So it's not always common knowledge. Our territory actually extends four miles-ish north of about Bowers Road. So very large territory, but we only serve really kind of city UGA and a few outskirts of that. So the public awareness program, Public Awareness and Damage Prevention Program is what I'm here to talk about. But I have to highlight that there are other programs that we run, and one of those in particular, the Distribution Integrity Management Program, commonly referred to through gas utilities as a DIMP, plays a pretty major role in the public awareness program. Our integrity management program really identifies threats to our system, and it ranks those things. It's a very long process. It's important to the utility. But why I highlight that is the number one threat to our system is third-party damages. And it's been that way for a long, long time. So the DIMP really drives where we need to focus efforts to keep our system in top-notch shape, which then highlights the Public Awareness and Damage Prevention Program that we run. The program objectives, this is very, I guess, simplified, but really it's to educate and inform stakeholders on natural gas safety, carbon monoxide safety, and 811. To minimize excavation damages and help excavators know how to respond properly to dig-ins, and to continually elevate and enhance the program through audits, KPIs, and survey results. And then we periodically do survey the public to evaluate the effectiveness of this program. The program is very important, and we want to make sure that what we're doing is not just our own thoughts and efforts. The effectiveness survey is really, really important to that, and I'll speak to that at the end. I would, it'd be a tragedy if I did not speak a little bit to some of the properties and safety of gas during a public awareness presentation. So properties of natural gas, it is colorless and odorless. But most people, I would hope, know that the rotten egg smell is how you identify natural gas. That is a chemical that is added to the system to create that smell. So that is not natural for natural gas. Gas is lighter than air, so different than propane. Propane will settle, natural gas will rise up. So it dissipates quickly when it's, when it's released. It is non-toxic, but it can create an asphyxiation, so it can displace basically all the oxygen in the rooms if you're in a confined space. So it still has that ability. And it is very flammable, but it does have a range. So instead of just telling you it's flammable, there is a range there, and that's basically the percent of gas in air. So four to 15%. So part of that, the program that we run, it's a lot of gas safety, it's a lot of 811. We recently worked with a consultant to kind of revamp everything, all the materials, the ads, all the things we've been using. It's kind of been a hodgepodge of stuff over the years, and these are just a few of the things. We kind of created a common theme throughout that, and we're really trying to make it familiar, so when we're posting things, there's a lot of ads the city posts out and gets on social media and whatnot. We tried to create kind of a gas safety theme, so to speak. And so we've probably got 20 or so different ads for spring meter care and surveys and carbon monoxide safety, and then can you recognize it? So this has got all the different ways you can recognize gas. It was a really, really great effort, and again, that stems from where we need to put our efforts in regards to integrity of the system. So that was a fun thing that we did. The middle thing there is a sticker. We got a bunch of stickers. We give those away frequently at events. A big part of the program is the materials and the events that we do. And so here, I'm just highlighting a few things, these two new posters. Like I said, we went through and revamped everything. These have been really, really fun to give away at events. We've got carpenter pencils, postcards, stickers, keychains, all kinds of stuff, hats, t-shirts, sweatshirts. Our stakeholder group for our program is affected public, and then it's contractors, excavators, emergency officials, public officials, and then one-call centers. So we kind of have a whole variety of things we do to reach different stakeholders and groups to, to make them more aware of gas safety and 811. But definitely fun, just, I guess, a bonus thing here is the poster with J.J. Harrison. We actually contribute some funds to him to sponsor him, and then he very graciously allowed us to use his image to make that poster, and now he's also using that, too. It was a fun kind of partnership for us, and kids tend to like it. Excuse me. And then program events is really a big, big part of this, so we get out in the community as much as we can. And we've been trying to kind of brand the image of 811. So part of enhancing the program was the purchase of those tents. We've got the nice new tablecloths. We've really tried to make this something that is very professional and nice, and, you know, kids and adults alike can gravitate towards it and understand the message. We try to have some fun, too. Our crews really enjoyed making the sandbox. In that sandbox, they had different colored pipes in there for the different utilities, and kids got to dig around and kind of explore in that manner, and it was really fun. If you're not familiar, we do the snow cone thing at a lot of our events, and so kids have to order snow cones based on utility notification code. So if you wanted a green cone, you'd order a sewer cone. So we have them order based on the utility, and it's just a really fun way to help teach the different utilities and the markings that you see out on the streets for locates. But events are a big thing. We've done farmer's market, national night out. We do a lot of stuff with contractors in town. Those are usually a little different. It's more safety-oriented than the, the snow cones and 811, but lots of events. And then, this is just the last slide. So the effectiveness survey really is a very big part of kind of how we gauge how we're doing. There's, I mean, this is a very brief overview of the large program that we run and the requirements that we have to follow. And then we do a lot of things above and beyond because we feel it's very important to educate and let the community know about the utility and the hazards and the pros and cons and all those things. But this survey, it's, it's very hard to read, but the last one on there, I'll just jump right to that, is, it says respondents who believe they have adequate knowledge about natural gas safety. And in 2024, that was at 82.17%. We feel like that's a very good percent of all the respondents to the survey, but that's something that we continue to build on. We've got a lot of different questions to kind of gauge where we're at. You know, if, if the hissing sound, if only a few people would put that as a way to recognize gas, we know that we need to advertise that a little bit more and make sure that people understand all the different ways. It's not just the rotten egg smell, it's the sound. And even, you know, dead vegetation. We've actually identified gas leaks from customers contacting us because they had a dead spot in their yard that they could not revive, and eventually it led to a small leak on a gas service line. And things typically don't grow when that saturates the ground below it. So there's lots of different ways to recognize gas. It's not just the rotten egg smell and the screaming gas from a dig-in. So the surveys are fun, and it really highlights that I think we're doing a good job, but we continue to build on that. It's been a good program. So I'm just highlighting a little bit for you. Hopefully this was educational. That's all I have.
Thank you, Darren.
I have a question. Yeah, if you're taking questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. President? Thanks for the presentation. It was, it was great. I had a question, you can clarify. I can't say I should know, but I think it came in a utility folder or something, or insert in the utility bill, about reminding folks that they need to be, they're responsible for their gas line maintenance and hire, bring, if you need an expert, bring in.
Yes, so that's on every utility bill.
Yeah, yeah. My question is, so we're talking about the service line. You mentioned service line. So the line, the line that comes into your yard and goes to your meter, that's the service line, I assume?
Correct.
So is that the property owner's responsibility?
No.
Okay.
No, we, we cover everything to the meter. So beyond the meter, sometimes someone will run right, like, to a back shop, and they have the option to run, excuse me, a separate service line, or they can run their own piping. If they run their own piping, that's what we basically are required and that we notify them of. It's a footnote on every utility bill, that if you have your own underground piping, we're not surveying that, we're not checking that for corrosion or any of those things. That's on them.
Okay, so basically, the inspection, if you will, the homeowner's responsibility is everything that's visible above ground from the meter into the house or through the ground into the house?
Yes, yeah, beyond the meter, it's the customers.
Okay, thank you, that helps. I knew that was the case with water, but I thought I was thinking something different for gas.
Yeah, the difference between us and waters, our meter's at the house versus the edge of right-of-way.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren.
So now is their time for public comment on non-agended items. This is a opportunity to speak to the council on items that are not on our tonight's agenda. You have three minutes. There are two signed up for Zoom. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to speak to the council on? Okay, so we'll go with Dana Betts. You would like to speak on the swimming pool? You need to come to the microphone, please. You have three minutes, and you need to identify yourself, and whether you live in the city or outside of the city, and you may not identify yourself as a candidate for public office or make any statements about campaigns. Yes, so, yeah, please, please state your name and whether you live in Ellensburg or elsewhere.
Okay.
And you have to talk about something that...
Okay. My name is Dana Betts, and I do not live in, I live in Kitataas, but I do work and I do volunteer, and I do have grandchildren in Ellensburg.
Okay.
Can I just speak?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not a public speaker, so forgive me, I don't know what I'm gonna say, but I'm a mom of four grown kids, I'm a grandma of 10, and three of them, the grandchildren, live right here in town, here in Ellensburg, and they utilize a swimming pool, as do, you know, a lot of my friends' kids, you know, and grandkids using the swimming pool. And prior, they were mainly using the college pool, but it's closed now. So basically, every child in Ellensburg that wants to paddle around in the pool for, you know, free time, or take swim lessons, or do the, the, what do I want to say? The swim lessons for the kids that are competing. And two of my grandsons here in town do the competitive swim team, and they have to use the city pool now instead of the college. And so they're at the pool, you know, all it seems like daily. Anyway, so problems with the pool is, as you guys, I'm sure, are aware, that the roof is, has issues. And the pool, the city has grown a lot since the pool was built, you know, so the needs are, the needs of the quantity of kids and the time constraints for the different activities that are there, that, you know, the kids are not getting to practice as much as they were. So I'm thinking, you know, the pool needs to be maintained, and then you guys need to think about maybe a new, bigger pool or expanding it, but this one needs, needs to stay open. Children need to learn how to swim, they're in hot tubs, they're paddling at the lake. They all need to be safe and know how to swim. So it's, it's really vital for the city to have a good swimming pool. How, what am I, at about one?
You have half a minute.
I have half a minute left?
Yep, there's a timer.
Is that right?
Yep.
I have half a minute. Okay, I'll be really quick to the point. We have homeless people here in the community that need showers, and we have little kids that need showers before they swim, between their swim meets and after because they're shivering, you know, these little skinny kids. Some of them are little, so I'm down to a few seconds. So anyway, as of right now, homeless people in the, in the community are using the very same shower. Moms are sending their little kids in to shower up, they're sitting on deck with their coffee.
And now your time's up.
And my time's up. Okay, well, there you go. I left the kids in the shower with the homeless people, so, right on.
Thank you. Again, you have three minutes, and I think you know the drill.
The drill. Thank you, Mayor Protim. Pat Kelleher, Ellensburg. I'm here to speak on the pool. We live in a great county bordered by two of the longest rivers in Washington State. You all, and even the people that are absent today, are relatively new to the valley. But I want to emphasize what an incredible advantage it is for our county of just 48,000 people to have an indoor public pool. For perspective, the city of Spokane, with a population of 230,000 people, does not have a single indoor public pool. In 1973, the old outdoor pool closed for six years. It was reopened as a new indoor facility in 1979 because local residents took initiative in 1977 to create and fund it. People like Brian Bartow, who opened a recycle shop in town, Amy Barker, who hauled me and countless other stingrays to swim meets across the state, and my father, served on the 12-member citizens committee that made it happen. That committee produced a community information sheet listing every member's phone number with the note, "For further information, call any member of the pool committee." It also stated that both the school district and the county had been contacted and were considering participation in the pool's operation and maintenance, with contributions based on use. The same cooperative spirit is what we need again. I understand the council's authority is limited, one important action being approval of the city budget. I want to thank the, the council again for budgeting the $35,000 on September 2nd for the engineering study to address the leaking roof that began in November of 2024. I used the city's rumors and questions feature on the website to ask about the status of the study. The email response I received was, "We have not started the process." I hope the city can move forward soon because the pool has always been more than a building. It's been a symbol of what this community can accomplish when it works together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Tori Jones.
I apologize, I'm not actually prepared to speak today, but thank you.
Okay. Do we have the two who have signed up online?
They, they didn't want to speak.
Oh, okay. So is there anyone else who would like to speak on non-agended items? Okay, we will move on then. Item 8A is a public hearing. This is the review of ordinance 4975, which is the 2025 Land Development Code amendments, and we'll consider first reading. So this being a public hearing, I need to read a script that we need to follow. "The purpose of this hearing is for the city council to consider land development code amendments and first reading of ordinance 4975, which would implement those changes. The public hearing is now open. I ask for your cooperation in the following procedure. Everyone will be given an opportunity to be heard. The city clerk will be making a recording of the proceedings. If you wish to participate in the hearing, you must raise your hand, your virtual hand on the Zoom meeting screen, or press star nine if you're connected by telephone, and wait until I have recognized your request and you have been unmuted. You should begin by stating your name and address and indicate whether you're speaking for yourself individually or as a spokesperson for a certain group or both. Speak slowly and clearly. Only one person will be allowed to speak at a time. Your testimony must only address the matter under consideration in this hearing. Any questions of staff are to be directed through the council. Each person will have an opportunity to address the council for an initial period not to exceed five minutes. If more time is needed, it will be made available after everyone has had an opportunity to speak." So before we hear from the audience, is there a staff report to be presented?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Stacy Henderson, Planning Manager. I'm here to present the proposed 2025 Title 15 Land Development Code changes for this public hearing, which includes the first reading of the ordinance, possibly, 4975, Attachment A in your packet. The city of Ellensburg is initiating a land development code amendment cycle pursuant to ECC 15250100, which is a type 5 review process. We just had a pretty in-depth study session today, so I will go over a few things for the sake of everyone here tonight, but I will try to keep it brief and not be too repetitive. There are four main update topics within this proposed Title 15 Land Development Code update, including two citizen-initiated updates. One pertains to ECC 15250010, which is a proposed exemption in the temporary use permit code section. This is, the intention of this was to allow for temporary sales offices, which typically need to exist, they're still temporary, but exist for longer than the current code allows, which is 60 days, possibly up to one year. The other citizen-initiated update is pertaining to ECC 15260180, which is a proposed repeal and replace of the binding site plan section. The applicant proposed some changes, and as staff worked on that code section, as we discussed earlier, we found a need for quite a few revisions and updates, leading to a repeal and replace of that section. There's also two community development initiated updates, one being to add co-living housing options as required per House Bill 1998, and the other being proposed general code cleanup. These four topics were explained in depth, as I mentioned, at the study session. As discussed, these all fell under the guise of adding clarifying language, rectifying timeline requirements, required updates, and correcting existing contradictions. To briefly cover noticing and previous council action, council approved the 2025 City of Ellensburg Long Range Work Program as presented by Community Development at the February 18th regular council meeting of this year. And these four amendments all fall under that work program as they address House Bill 1998, address citizen-initiated code updates, and item 1F of that list was, included housekeeping code amendments as identified by staff. For noticing, the city issued a CEPA notice of DNS on October 2nd, with the public comment period ending October 23rd. No public comment was received, and the DNS was issued. The city also sent this proposed code update to Commerce for the required 60-day review. It was sent September 18th, which means the 60-day review will end November 18th. Planning Commission hearing was held to address the proposed code changes on October 9th, 2025. The Planning Commission moved to recommend approval of these proposed changes with minor amendments. The Planning Commission proposed changes have been listed in your staff report under the analysis section, so they were kind of sectioned out by the four different categories of the update to help understand where some of that focus was. And they were also incorporated into your, into the proposed ordinance, Attachment A that you have today in your packet. To briefly address the Planning Commission items that were proposed along with their recommended approval, the binding site plan appeal and replace, they, the Planning Commission approval didn't include any changes to that section. The temporary use exemption, the applicant had proposed a subsequent word change to the proposed language at a time when it was too late to incorporate it into the packet. It was just, they suggested one word change, but it was too late for that hearing, so this was discussed at the Planning Commission hearing and reviewed and accepted as one of the Planning Commission's amendments. The co-living housing, Planning Commission approval included minor amendments to add a kitchenette definition, as well as include reference to four-sale dwellings in the co-living housing definition. And for the cleanup, the Planning Commission approval included a few minor amendments included, including removing language that would restrict plat phasing to long subdivisions only, revising private parking lot listing to only allow conditional use approval in CH and RCMU instead of permitted use. So they suggested, the private parking lot was different from free and commercial parking lot definition, and they suggested the private parking lot is essentially just a conditional use, not outright allowed. And a few amendments pertaining to side yard setbacks. So in all, the Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation that the city council adopt the ECC, or Title 15 amendments with the suggested edits as stated. After review, staff finds that the amendments as found in Exhibit A are in accordance with the comprehensive plan, will not adversely affect public health, safety, and general welfare, and are not contrary to the best interests of the citizens and property owners of the city. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the amendments as found in Exhibit A pertaining to ordinance 4975. to ordinance 4975.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions? Whoops, I got to follow the script. Sorry. So the floor is open to testimony from the public. Each person will have an opportunity to address the council for an initial period not to exceed five minutes. If more time is needed, it will be made available after everyone has had an opportunity to speak. Is there anyone who wants to speak about the land use code? Seeing no one, and I don't see any hands raised online. Does the staff have anything to add?
No.
Are, let's see. So counsel, do you have any questions of the staff or the public now?
We do not.
We, we talked about golf courses in the study session, and someone asked, does that include miniature golf? Or that's a whole different animal, isn't it?
Um.
What zone would we allow miniature golf in?
It would not include. It's in the park. I'm not sure which section that would include. I could get back to you on that, though. It would not be part of the golf course definition.
I wouldn't think so. Yeah, it's more of a.
Commercial recreation.
Commercial recreation. Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
And I also, on page 251, the, the parking in commercial, central commercial, that section is deleted, where it says, it's a .7 parking space per bedroom. So, so it reverts to the table. Is that, so is it a half of space per, what, what would the parking in the central commercial be if it, if we delete this line?
Zero.
Zero.
Thank you, counsel. Mark Rudd, Associate Planner, Community Development. That amendment would have no change. The issue that we ran into there was the potential for confusion between that and another standard because it makes reference, it, it just lacked clarity. So it, it's the same standard in the table. It just refers back to that. There was a proposal that had come through where it could have potentially been interpreted as a different standard from what was in the table for substantively the same use. And so it is just, again, in the nature of clarification for the standard that applies, so it would be the .7 for those uses.
Okay, thank you. So, any further questions? So the public testimony portion of this hearing is now closed. Counsel may begin its discussion and deliberation of this matter. Let's start with a motion.
I move to conduct the public hearing and approve first reading of ordinance 4975, amending in the Ellensburg City Code Title 15 Land Development Code as found in Exhibit A.
Second.
Okay, a motion and second to approve first reading of ordinance 4975. Is there any discussion?
No, other than what we covered in our study session, I think, appreciate, I appreciate all the staff time that went into this. This is not the exciting part of planning, but it's, it's pretty important to get the details worked out, so, thank you.
I appreciate all of the work that went into it. I'm going to just leave golf courses alone for, for now, and, and we'll have another shot at this with the full council, and, and maybe there's.
Second reading.
Something that, that we can work out in between times.
Sure.
So, so if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I too vote aye opposed. Motion carries.
An ordinance relating to the City of Ellensburg Land Development Code being Title 15 of the Ellensburg City Code, amending chapters is listed in the ordinance and striking Title 15, Division 7 in its entirety.
Thank you. Item 8B is a public hearing, and the purpose of this hearing is for the city council to consider first reading of ordinance 4974, which would establish the ad valorem property tax levy for 2026. The public hearing is now open. I ask your cooperation in the following procedure. Everyone will be given an opportunity to be heard. The city clerk will be making a recording of the proceedings. If you wish to participate in the hearing, you must raise your virtual hand on the Zoom meeting screen or press star nine if you are connected by telephone, and wait until I have recognized your request and you have been unmuted. You should then begin by stating your name and address and indicate whether you're speaking for yourself individually or as a spokesperson for a certain group or both. Speak slowly and clearly. Only one person will be allowed to speak at a time. Your testimony must only address the matter under consideration in this hearing. Any questions of staff are to be directed through the council. Each person will have an opportunity to address the council for an initial period not to exceed five minutes. If more time is needed, it will be made available after everyone has had an opportunity to speak. Before we hear from the audience, is there a staff report to be presented?
Yes, good evening, counsel. Jerika Pasco, Finance Director for the City of Ellensburg. So as set forth by state statute, council must hold a public hearing on revenue sources for the taxing district's following year's current expense budget. For the purposes of RCW 84.55.120, current expense budget means that the budget, which is primarily funded by taxes and charges, and reflects the provision of ongoing services. It does not include capital, enterprise, or special assessment budgets. The hearing must include consideration of possible increases in property tax revenues and must be held prior to the consideration of adopting an ad valorem tax ordinance for 2026. Estimated, excuse me, estimated 2026 revenues have been prepared to determine the available revenue to support the city's financial needs of the general government in 2026. The city's 2025-2026 biennial budget considers the estimated available revenues and anticipated financial requirements and recommends an amount to be raised by ad valorem taxes in 2026. General fund revenue estimates are presented in the attached titled General Fund 2026 Present, or Revenue Sources, which I have up here for you. So to go over our quick revenue source presentations, I ask that you keep in mind that many of these numbers are projections or estimates, and will continue to change as more information becomes available. In addition, I believe it's important to note that I may use the words estimates and projections interchangeably. So on the first page here, you probably may ask, what do general fund activities include? So the general fund activities shown here include council in general, or council and city management, overall general government, economic development, finance services, community development services, parks and recreation services, engineering services, library and public safety services. Majority of our general fund expenditures are funded with tax revenue, so these include the property taxes, sales taxes, other taxes and fees, and BNO taxes. General fund does not include all governmental funds, however, there are, that are supported by some of the same tax sources, such as streets, arterial streets, debt, and capital construction, that I'll talk about a little bit later here. Here we have the 2026 projected revenue sources. This gives us a percentage breakdown of the estimated revenue sources. So overall, taxes account for about 64.1% of our 2026 projected general fund revenue, followed by charges for services at 24.5%, which includes mostly our inter-fund charges to our other funds, such as our utility funds, as well as some rec fee in engineering. And coming in third, there is intergovernmental revenues, which is mostly grants and inter-local agreements, and then followed by we receive some for licenses and permits, fines and penalties, miscellaneous, and other financing sources. Overall, our total revenue projected for the general fund is around 23.7 million, with an estimated beginning fund balance of 9.4 million, or total available funding sources for 2026 at around 33 million. Here we have the projected tax revenue. So with taxes being the largest general fund revenue source, we show a breakdown by tax type and compare current year estimates. This does include local criminal justice, but it does not include the 1/30 cent tax or the two, or the 3/10 cent for criminal justice, or the 1/10 affordable housing, or the 2/10 transit tax. Those are different funds, those aren't general fund, and so those numbers are not included in here. So we have limited control over the taxes as a revenue source. So for example, property taxes, we have a 1% cap, or inflation, whichever is lower. The utility taxes are very dependent on weather, consumption, and prices, such as natural gas and electric prices for what we, what we pay for the product. And sales taxes have many economic factors, with construction being the most volatile. So as you see here in our estimates, we're seeing, we're projecting an actual decrease in our 2026 estimates over our 2025 estimates, majority of that increase being in sales tax, which is something I will talk about a little bit later, why we've seen a significant increase in sales tax this year that we can't predict that it will continue. Here we have 25-26 general fund revenue sources excluding the taxes. So if you take out the taxes that we receive to cover the general fund expenditures, the remaining 68% of our funding comes from charges for services, which is, I think I mentioned before, which is mostly internal fund charges. So we charge our different utilities, for example, for the work that we do in the financial, in the finance department, financial statements, budget, and stuff like that, as well as we allocate part of your cost, Heidi's cost, other engineering costs and stuff to the different utility funds. So majority of those charges from services we see from other funds of the city, as well as any of our inter-local agreements. And then, of course, we have a breakdown here of the, the remaining revenue sources. Overall, we are expecting a decrease in these as well for the estimates, most of it being charges for services. We true up at the end of the year for charges for services, so we charge based on a budget, but if departments don't spend their whole budget, we go back and we have to credit those departments for that. So we, we have to true up at the end of the year. So that's part of the reason why we see a decrease in estimate for 2026. As well as you see, the significant decrease is in intergovernmental revenue, and that is due to grants. We haven't secured those grants yet. If we haven't secured them, then they're not included in the 2026 budgets or projections. And then we have a decrease as well in our licenses and permits. We received significant permit permitting fees this year for WinCo project and a couple other projects that we don't expect to receive those in 2026. Here is all the 2026 estimates compared to 2025, so this is designed to try to kind of give you the big picture. So overall, our revenue estimates are down, are looking to be down about 8.8%, mostly due to the, the grants that I talked about that we have yet to be applied for or secured, and the effects of the WinCo permitting, building permitting. There is significant uncertainty, too, on the outlook of controlling inflation and the impacts it may have on our projections, so we did project conservatively again for Sales tax is one of the largest revenue sources available to cities, so we feel it's important to give a little bit more information on our sales tax trends because that is affecting these revenue sources significantly. So as I mentioned previously, in addition, in addition to general fund activities listed on the first page, sales tax also, excuse me, supports streets, GO, or general obligation debt, and capital projects. So if you look at our 2026 budgeted sales tax support, in the green there, that is streets. Over here in blue is the rest of the general fund that I mentioned on the first page, and there in red is our debt payments, our GO debt payments. So you can see that just over half goes to the general government expenditures, but three quarters of it goes to the other funds that aren't, aren't in the general fund. This chart here on, below is, is to show the, the sales tax for non-construction versus the sales tax construction and how we spend that. So we have typically, the council in the past has been, has been very good at making sure that we don't spend one-time revenue on continuous operating expenditures. So construction being the most volatile, when we see a large bump in sales tax for construction, we set that aside and we spend it on one-time expenditures, so we're not going ahead and doing something like, that's creating an additional operating expenditure once it's complete that we won't have the funding for. So as you can see here in blue, this is a sales tax that we've received year over year for non-construction, and then the portion that we've received for construction, sales tax is in red. So the last two lines here is, what, 2025 through September 30th? So you can see that the red, the construction has jumped drastically this year, but our other non-construction has gone down. So our regular retail sell and those things are going down. Those are the ones that fund continuous operating expenditures. The green line there shows how we've spent, or where we've spent that one-time expenditure, so you can see that we try to keep in line, we try to spend majority of our construction again on one-time expenditures, which most of those have been, in the past, have been for street and arterial street. This one shows a percentage of increase in regular retail sales tax collected. So you can see year over year, it's usually an, an increase over the previous year, until we got about midway through in 2018, we saw a decrease, but that was due to us going to, from GAAP to cash basis in our reporting. Then we saw a 7% increase in 2018, in 2019 over 2018, and then we saw that drop in 2020 for a 1% decrease. We started to go back up in '21, we had a 14% increase '22, we had an 8% increase, and then '23 was flat again. We saw, we started to see another little jump in 2024. Again, that was due to the same project that we're seeing this year, and it's all based on when they make payments out for the services, the construction services, or when they're purchasing equipment and stuff to go in there, when they're paying architectural fees and stuff like that. So the very last one there, we've seen a 40% increase compared to third quarter of 2024's sales tax, which I'll talk about in our quarterly report as well. And this last one is to finish our report showing the trend of sales tax from month to month. So typically, we've always been able to follow sales tax kind of seasonally. You can kind of see that it goes up and down at, at different periods of time, but this is year over year, and it's been pretty consistent, except for a little bit of difference there in COVID years. And then you see in the one first line here, the big jump in August, that was 2024, that was again this WinCo project, and now we're seeing that in 2025, the one that ends in July, because we have a two-month lag of when we see sales tax. So July sells, we actually, is what we received at the end of September. So July sales, we actually, is what we received at the end of September. So upon conclusion of this public hearing on revenue sources, staff will present first reading of the 2026 Ad Valorem Property Tax Ordinance. Currently, staff recommends that council conduct this public hearing to consider the 2026 revenue sources, including property tax.
Thank you. The floor is open to testimony from the public. Each person will have an opportunity to address the council for an initial period not to exceed five minutes. If more time is needed, it will be made available after everyone has had an opportunity to speak. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? Looks like Mr. Kellher and then Ms. Betts.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Pat Keller, Ellensburg. I've often heard in this chamber that you want the feeling of what people support, and you haven't seen anybody supporting this or supporting that and getting a feel for that. And I want to share with you, maintaining county roads is one of the most basic and essential functions of county government. Property taxes are already collected separately into a county road fund in a general fund to support these responsibilities. Before the 2024 ballot measure, the Board of Commissioners spent 125,000 on a consultant to promote the supposed benefits of increasing county road funds. This, the voters overwhelmingly rejected the proposal by a 70% margin. The reason I'm sharing that is people are having a tough time making ends meet. They got to balance their budget. Okay? 70% for roads. I mean, you can't get any more basic than that. I mean, if the county didn't do anything, they'd need to do roads. We use roads today. I voted no because, like every household in our county, the BOC must learn to live within their means, yet they're tone deaf to the message from the voters. The BOC voted three to oh to raise property taxes immediately after that election. The council now has the opportunity to send a symbolic but meaningful message by foregoing the 1% property tax increase, approximately $37,000, that you, too, are committed of living within a budget. I also encourage the council to solicit voter input annually in place any future proposed tax increases before the voters for approval, so you really know what they support. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Betts? Yes.
I guess I have a question, if that's okay. I was wondering if the roof on the swimming pool, if they've up the rates, up the, you know, put that into the budget considerations.
Okay, thank you. We'll direct that after everyone has had a chance. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding property tax increases? And I don't see anyone online. So Ms. Pasco, can you discuss the pool roof?
The pool roof repairs are included in the budget. They are not from the sources that you see here. They're from fund balance and other revenue sources that we had in there. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So the pool roof is in the budget. They are not from the revenue sources particularly that I'm talking about here, property tax. They're from fund balance and other revenue sources that we had. But that's a great example of the one-time revenue expenditures that we use at construction sales tax for.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Does the staff have anything to add? Council, do you have any questions of the staff or public?
I do. Jerika, can you give us an idea of how I'm going to be impacted by this 1% tax increase?
So that's in my next presentation. This right here is just for the actual public hearing on the presentation of the revenue sources, and then I can follow that once that this public hearing has been done on the presentation for the ordinance for property tax.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question? Maybe, it's in the staff report, so maybe it's appropriate. Could you elaborate just a little bit on the 1% limitation against what we're experiencing in terms of inflation and true costs?
Yeah, I'll talk about that, too, with the property tax. But yes, we're seeing significant inflation and significant expenditures. So the 1% revenue increases would not cover our expenditures.
Right. We're not keeping up even with 1%. So zero puts us even behind.
And we're not the only, I mean, every city in the state of Washington is in that same position when it comes with the 1% property tax issue, so.
Thank you.
Okay. So I guess I'm a little confused. So this, we're going to close the public hearing, and then we're going to have another staff report regarding the ordinance.
But yeah.
There's two pieces.
Staff recommends that council conduct the public hearing to consider the 2026 revenue sources, including property tax. And upon conclusion of this public hearing, I'll present first reading of the 2026 Ad Valorem.
Okay. If there are no further questions from council, the public testimony portion of this hearing is now closed, and council may begin its discussion and deliberation, which there is no action on this. Correct?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. So we are now out of public hearing and just normal now.
Okay, so the proposed ordinance reflects the 2026 levy for the property taxes to be collected in 2026 for municipal purposes. The ordinance establishes the 2026 regular property tax levy and certifies the levy to the Kidattas County Commissioners. State statute limits the increase in property taxes to the lower of 1% over the prior year levy rate or the IPD implicit price deflator. The IPD inflation rate for setting 2026 property taxes due in 2026 was 2.44%. Therefore, the city is limited to the 1% increase. Tax revenues, like I talked about before, funds approximately 64% of the general fund budget, of which property tax alone accounts for around 25%. Generally, expenditures increase at a rate of 3% per year. Because council has very limited control over the revenue or funding sources that support general fund government activities, it's hard to fund general support activities without increasing general fund revenues, such as property tax. The city cannot fund the necessary overhead increases without further reducing fund balance and/or decreasing services. In order for delivery of service to remain consistent from year to year, funding of these services must also remain consistent and thus rise as expenses rise. As an example, our fire marshal EMS and jail services increased with a combination by over 36%, which is what our, around 37, or over 36,000, which are property tax 1% increases, around 37,000. That is only a small tipping block of the increases that we've seen. Medical insurance to the general fund is estimated to increase by 8% or over $100,000 this year. Property tax collections for the city of Ellensburg are estimated to be $3,814,745.18, equalling the highest lawful levy limit for this tax year. This is an increase of around $89,932.95 over the 2025 levy. This increase reflects a 1% increase of $37,248.12 over the 2025 levy of $3,724,812.23, and an increase of $52,684.83 is attributed to new constructions, improvements, wind turbines, solar biomass and geothermist facilities. So just to give you an example, like you talked about before, a taxable, a house with a taxable value of around 400,000 would have paid around 507,000 to the city in property taxes this year. So a 1% increase would be a $5.08 increase for the year or around 42 cents per month. So the 1% increase is not a significant increase by any means to any property taxpayers.
Could you repeat the, I think I didn't hear the numbers right. For the $400,000 house, what was the tax? Not 500,000?
No, 500, around 508 dollars.
508.
A year. Yeah. So with a 1% increase, you're seeing around 5.08 a year increase go into the city in your property taxes or 42 cents a month. So staff recommends council approve first reading of the proposed ordinance 4974 establishing the Ad Valorem Property Tax Levy for 2026.
Okay. Thank you. Council, do you have any questions? Any further questions? Is there any further public comment? We're not in a hearing, so now you have three minutes if you want to say anything now. Okay? Seeing no one, council, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'll move for first, I'm sorry, I'll move first reading of ordinance 4974 establishing the Ad Valorem Property Tax Levy for 2026.
Second. Motion second to conduct first reading of proposed ordinance 4974 establishing the Ad Valorem Property Tax Levy for 2026. Discussion?
I'll speak. I appreciate the comments, Mr. Kellher. I appreciate the concern people in the community have about property taxes being raised. But I'm hoping people can concentrate on the impact it's going to have on them, and we're talking $5.08 a month. This is a tax, as Jerika has pointed out, our inflation rate is 3%. The most we can raise through this is 1%. So we're still not going to be able to keep up with our expenses. If we don't pass this 1% increase, then next year, we're going to be way far behind inflation. So it, while it's hard to understand, and the concept is hard to grasp, and none of us like to pay taxes, this is something that we have to do if we're going to keep the city functional and the general fund solvent.
Yeah, I would agree. Well said, and I think the comments said the same. I think we're, we've got limited tools in this area available to us, and I think this is our, this is our, sort of the minimum we can do just to try to keep pace on, at least on this side of revenue generation, so.
It just occurred to me, what is the cost of putting something like this on the ballot? It's more than $37,000, isn't it?
And I think it's less than, but it's probably likely more than $20,000 for just the cost of the election.
To put this on the ballot, as suggested, would cost perhaps half of what we're, what we would collect. So it would be a little bit pointless.
I would add also, I think, harkening back to the Great Recession, which seems like it was not that long ago, but it was a while back. It was a popular theme, sort of coming out of the recession, for local governments, whether they are cities or counties, to sort of go in the opposite direction and oppose any tax increases for any particular reason. And of this, and there are many examples of one elected official down another part of the state referred to it as a race to the bottom, sort of depleting the revenues needed to provide basic services is sort of like, as was mentioned, you really don't ever catch up from that. So I think it sounds good, and I can appreciate the sensitivity on the cost, but the day-to-day and the operating needs of the city of Ellensburg don't stop because the revenue isn't there, so. And we've had lots of conversations over the last year or two about the importance of maintaining what are considered essential services in the community, such as our swimming pool. And, you know, if we're talking about a situation, a scenario where the tax revenue is flat or inverted, facilities would need to be closed. This isn't a question of what we can maintain with less. So I think it's, it is responsible, I think, as best we can with what we have to work with.
Okay. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I two vote aye opposed. Motion carries.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ellensburg, Washington, levying property taxes for the city of Ellensburg for the fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2026, on all property in said city, which is subject to taxation for the purpose of paying sufficient revenue to carry on general operations, recognize voter-approved levies, and pay debt service obligations of said city as required by law.
Thank you. We are at 10A, page 289. This is an interlocal agreement and memorandum of understanding for the formation of Kidattas County Economic Development Partnership.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members. Kelly Vandenberg, Arts and Economic Development Manager for the city of Ellensburg. On September 15th, 2025, staff presented a report and introduced the formal pledge of the Kidattas County Economic Development Partnership. And several members of that partnership came and spoke on behalf of the partnership and the importance of the implementation of the Kidattas County Economic Development Strategic Plan. And I want to talk a little bit about the difference between the Economic Development Partnership and implementation of the strategic plan. The municipalities that have agreed to the interlocal agreement, as well as the MOU, have already been in the process of implementation of the strategic plan. The plan was finalized in February of 2023, and we began work on how to elevate the communication of the first goal of collaboration. And what you have tonight before you in the interlocal agreement for the municipalities and the MOU for the municipalities and our economic development partnerships is the formalization of that collaboration. It's going to make it so that our implementation work doesn't happen in silos, that there's a transparency as a result of the work of the interlocal agreement and the MOU. I asked this evening that the council move to authorize Mayor Elliott to sign on behalf of the city of Ellensburg, the ILA, to formalize the Kidattas County Economic Development Partnership between Kidattas County, the city of Roslyn, the city of Cleelum, the township of South Cleelum, the city of Kidattas, and to sign the MOU with municipalities previously mentioned, and the Kidattas County Chamber of Commerce, the Roslyn Downtown Association, the Cleelum Downtown Association, and the Ellensburg Downtown Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Vandenberg? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak regarding this issue? Mr. Kellher? No, three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Pat Keller, Ellensburg. The Council of Governments meets 12 times a year to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners the allocation of the .09 distressed sales tax within Kidattas County. Over the years, these recommendations have directed over 18 million, primarily towards capital improvement projects. The annual budget of roughly 1.8 million is administered efficiently and with overcast overhead costs remaining under $25,000 a year. overhead costs remaining under twenty-five thousand dollars a year. It should be noted that the existing interlocal agreement and current bylaws of the COG, there is no limitation preventing the COG chair from carrying out all the necessary administrative duties that you're alluding to. He can, he can appoint a special group, he can appoint, he can, you know, contract. The, the problem with, with what you're doing is unlike entities formed under Title 57 in the RCW, a public port, a public utility, a port or a recreation district, the COG does not possess formal district authority or statutory framework of the special purpose districts. It is not subject to an annual state audit, and its current administrative structure is lean and transparent, making it straightforward to document and track awards. There's no infrastructure presently exists to manage the reoccurring expenses such as office rent, payroll, and supplies. The, the strength of the COG lies in the ability to unite elected officials from across the county jurisdictions, to identify solutions, share, and share challenges, and recommend timely capital investments, leveraging opportunities for state and federal matching funds. Recent examples of this are the Vantage Sewer District Study in the South Clealum Water System Improvement. Both were addressed critical community needs through the targeted efficient investment. I wish I had thirty more minutes and I'd go to your flow chart. You're talking about expenses, that executive director's going to cost you two hundred thousand bucks. Okay? Your income flow is at the discretion of Kitatis County Commissioners. Two yes votes on a, on a Tuesday, it's gone. Who hired him? Who fires him? It's not the COG. Thank you.
Thank you for being very timely. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Counsel?
Mayor Protem, I, I moved to authorize all the stuff that is in that first paragraph I pitched, and Ms. Vandenberg read it very eloquently a while ago. That would put the, it would formalize the ILA for the Kitatis County Economic Development Partnership between the county and all the, all the other entities that have been identified.
Is there a second?
Yeah, that also includes signing the MOU, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion and second to sign the interlocal agreement and the memorandum, memorandum of understanding regarding the Economic Development Partnership. Is there discussion?
I just, I think it's an interesting, kind of an exciting time, I think, in the, in the economic development area. So I think the comments Mr. Kelleher raised are going to be kind of of immediate attention when the organization starts rolling out, and it'll be, it will be interesting to see how that plays out and see what kind of positive action we can get in the implementation phase, so. It's, I think with anything new, there's some risk involved, but I think it's worth, worth the effort.
Yeah, and, and I would say that this is a, a different kind of approach, whereas in the past, all the cities have had their own economic development plans, and they've put money into those. The county has had its economic development plan, and it's put money into that, and Chamber has had theirs. So the notion of bringing all of those resources to the table, both financially as well as human resource-wise, to, to implement a strategic plan that involves every major employer in Kitatis County for economic develop, I think, is very courageous. It is very different, and there will be some risk. But I feel good about it, the potential that we have here to make it work. We have good people, we have good intentions, and it's, it's been a long time coming, the planning of it, so I think it's a good thing to move forward with.
Any further comments? Can I just say ditto? What she said? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I two vote aye opposed? No, motion carries.
Thank you.
We are at item 11A, and this is to consider a first and pine revised proposal. Page 306.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Lily Frye, Housing Program Manager. Before you tonight is a revised design for the First and Pine Project. The developers have kept in touch with the city as they have worked through the underwriting and lending challenges on the previously approved plan for the site. They prepared a revised design for the site and have developed a new partnership prepared to implement it. The developers presented the revised proposal for sixteen to seventeen townhouse homeownership units to the Affordable Housing Commission on October first of 2025. The AHC unanimously voted to recommend the proposal to council for approval, noting that this project remains an innovative opportunity to support local private developers to quickly build needed affordable housing. The revised design responds differently to the original request for proposals evaluation criteria than the accepted and revised proposals that council previously approved. The decision before council is whether to direct staff to prepare an updated affordable housing agreement for the revised proposal, accepting it for site development, or to direct staff to reissue an RFP for design proposals for the property. Skylar Bissamrap and representatives from the Mapt TM Construction and HomeSite team are with us this evening to share an overview of the changes and the vision for the revised site design and to answer any questions you may have. I'll pass it to their team to walk you through.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's see if I can, let's look here. All right. Thanks, Lily. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, council members. My name is Skylar Bissamrap. I'm an Ellensburg resident. I'm a member of the county's Homeless Assistant Affordable Housing Committee and an Ellensburg Planning Commissioner. But tonight I am speaking not as any of those things, but as a partner at Manastash Architecture, Planning and Development, and as the former Director of Operations for Inversion Design Build, who won the RFP in 2024 for the First and Pine Site. Tonight, we're going to introduce you to the new team and explain in that process why there is a new team. I'm joined by Henry Thomas of TM Construction and Uche Okesey of HomeSite. HomeSite was already on board as the development partner for Inversion Design Build when we last presented this project to you in March of this year. I'm going to, after those introductions, briefly explain project delays since March. I'm going to try to do this as quickly as I can. There's a lot of weeds to get into, but I've been very grateful for the time and patience that city staff and the council have taken with this project. I'm going to try to respect your time tonight as well. Then I'm going to talk about the new model, which we're just calling Simple Town Homes. We're going to talk a little bit about the design, we're going to talk about the design, buyer profiles for our two unit types, we're going to talk about down payment assistance options that are facilitated through HomeSite, and we'll talk a bit about our outreach strategy. And finally tonight, we're going to talk about why this project still matters. Some of this was covered in the letter that we addressed the Affordable Housing Commission, which you received in your packet, but I really just kind of want to underscore some of those points tonight. Introduction to the new team. So as I mentioned, I was the Director of Operations for Inversion Design Build, was hired almost exactly a year ago to kind of run point on this project. I left my previous job that I was at for nine years because I believed that this site was a great opportunity for affordable ownership in Ellensburg. I still believe that. The founder of Inversion, Nathan Poel, hired me to run it, and it was based on the assumption that it would be able to get underway more quickly, for reasons we'll get to, that didn't happen. And so in the interim, as Inversion wound down, I formed a partnership with Molly Macamara and Mark Brown, who are here today. That is Manastash Architecture, Planning and Development. We are a full-service architecture and planning firm, who are also doing a development project, namely this project, if we receive permission. At MAP, we're also joined by Jordan Lowe, who was my colleague at Inversion Design Build. So MAP is based on Mark Brown's 28 years of practice in Kitatis County and 48 years of practice total in Washington State. We have a deep knowledge of local regulations, a strong relationship with city staff, and we have experience with housing across a range of scales from ADUs to 2,000 unit developments. And between Jordan and myself, we are 50% former Inversion staff, so while this is a new proposal and a new team, there is a fair bit of continuity. One of the main differences between MAP and Inversion Design Build is a design-build firm, they were totally vertically integrated, so they were planning on being the developer, the architect, and the general contractor. MAP is not a general contractor, and so to remedy that, we are forming a joint venture with TM Construction. You know, Henry can answer any specific questions about the contracting elements, should you have them. They're an established Ellensburg business, they have deep relationships with local consultants, we are hoping to keep as much of the contracting for this project local as possible. Both partners have backgrounds in construction management, and they have been frequent collaborators with both Mark Brown's practice before, Molly and I partnered with him, and with MAP going forward today. We are also both very local firms. Our office is in the 1888 Building, right next to the bookstore. TM's office is in the Fitters Building, so we are ready and available should you have any questions throughout this process. We're joined by HomeSite, and online we have Uche Okesey to talk a little bit about their model and their history.
Sorry, we can't hear you.
Just come through the speakers, do you want to get her through the audio?
Can you try now?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Give me just a second.
Thank you. All right, Uche, take it away.
Okay. As I was saying, I'm Uche Okesey, Director of Real Estate Development at HomeSite. And we are a CDFI, we provide homebuyer counseling, down payment assistance, education, first mortgage products to low to moderate income homebuyers, and we are also a community development corporation. And in our area of focus, which is primarily South Seattle, we build affordable homes for homeownership, for purchase, and provide community and economic development programs in collaboration with our South Seattle community members and organizations. And we are excited to partner with, on attach, on this project, to help with securing project financing and providing the homebuyer education, counseling, and down payment assistance, which we provide statewide.
Thanks, Uche. And so, yeah, HomeSite is really going to be our guide through helping to educate buyers. They have a tremendous amount, three decades of experience with outreach and education to homebuyers, pre-purchase counseling, affordable lending products, both developing them and providing home loan lending on them, post-purchase support for folks who are oftentimes first-time homebuyers, and then especially critical with working with vulnerable communities, safety net and foreclosure prevention. They really go out of their way to make sure that the people they lend to don't go into foreclosure and have a lot of experience with working folks that don't have a lot of cushion in their personal incomes. So that's the new team. I'm going to explain very briefly the project delays since March. There are kind of three main issues that came up. One was one that's kind of core to Inversion's main premise from the 2024 RFP response. The whole basis was that rental income could be used to underwrite small multifamily housing, assuming they were owner-occupied. This is based on explicit underwriting guidelines in black and white from the FHA, as well as, we learned later, Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. And the issue here is that despite those black and white guidelines, guidelines do not equal lender reality, right? Just because FHA in theory can authorize these loans does not mean that lenders are required to make those loans. Secondly, was what we're calling the income qualification catch 22. State of Washington has a number of really great affordable ownership programs. All of them take all income used to underwrite the mortgage into consideration with income qualification. And so the catch 22 we ended up with is that our buyers were income-qualified right up until the point they close on the home, and then that rental income that the Inversion plan needed to underwrite those mortgages would put them up above 80% AMI, really only like 90 or 100% of AMI, but still they would no longer be eligible for any State of Washington affordable ownership programs. I went back and forth with folks at Commerce and with the Washington State Housing Finance Commission. Fortunately, it's just the letter of the law, and there was no way around that. Finally, there's the national context. We have federal layoffs had implications on housing and policy grant-making at the national level, uncertainty around the potential privatization of Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, leading folks over there to be very cautious about greenlighting any loans that didn't fit a very standard kind of pro forma. Worries in the lending community, this came directly from underwriters, around rising delinquency in their portfolios, and if they couldn't secondary these mortgages to these big national secondary markets, they would have to keep them on their own books, and they were already seeing delinquencies on their books. Worries about construction cost risk with both materials stemming from tariffs and labor stemming from immigration enforcement, and all of this dissuaded even the more creative underwriters we talked with from greenlighting what would have been really a kind of first-of-its-kind project. That, again, would have worked in theory, but given all these factors, did not end up working out in the real world. In the end, there was just too much uncertainty. We had a commitment from HomeSite to portfolio $1 million worth of loans, which for these larger units, that Inversion was proposing with the rental units attached, would have been two of our 15 proposed units previously. That left us with a balance of 13 that we had unaccounted for. All of the other banks and credit unions we talked to, which was over 12, passed, given some combination of their policies and the current risk climate. That brings us to the new model that we're calling Simple Town Homes. So this is the rendering we had in your packet and on the front. It's showing, this particular one's showing 17 units. It's a mix of one and two bedrooms. One of the things I'd like to qualify with this is that we are proposing leaving the exact unit mix up to the market. Our construction lender, same as we discussed in March, is requiring pre-sale of these units. And when I talk a little bit about the demographics that we're looking to help out, we really want to let the, the kind of market speak on what the mix should be. The units were designed to be exactly the same width to facilitate that. One change since last time is we believe we have slightly more space along the alley, reviewing the RFP documents that Inversion initially responded to than the Inversion plan in 2025, March 2025 assumed. This means we think we can get 17 parking spaces and therefore 17 units on the site. We need to confirm this with a survey, should we receive the green light from you. If not, the project still works with 16 units, so this site plan looks very similar to the 15-unit plan that Inversion had, but with a 16th unit, they're a bit smaller, so that gives us a little bit more space to fit utilities in what would have been the open site in the, the previous plan from this March. So this is our one-bedroom unit. It's about 546 square feet with a galley kitchen, a living area, and storage. It's going to be designed to be what we call ADA adaptable, meaning that all the spatial requirements for ADA are baked into the plan. Should we have a buyer that needs ADA accessibility outright, we would deliver it to that buyer at no extra cost, but we're not going to add things like grab bars for buyers that don't need them. That said, if at any point down the road, an ADA buyer were to buy it as a subsequent buyer, those adaptations, you know, could be made. The two-bedroom unit is two floors, again, exactly the same width, 19 foot six, and it's got all the common space on the ground floor and the two units and the full bath upstairs. So I've got these buyer profiles, they were in your packet. In the interest of time, I'm not going to belabor them, but the kind of main takeaways is that our one-bedroom is looking at a family of one. It could, in theory, accommodate a family of two, but, you know, income is capped family size. So looking conservatively, that family of one for the current 2025 income limits is just over 60,000. Go through all the mortgage, they can support about $204,000 in debt per all the state guidance. guidelines on that. With a 20% down payment, I'm going to talk a little bit about where that down payment is coming from in a moment. That gets us to a home sale price of $256,000. There are no new construction one-bedroom houses on the market. I'll talk about that in a minute. And there's certainly nothing for sale in the county that is move-in-ready for $256,000. So that is going to be a very unique product. For the two bedrooms, we're looking at a family of three as our baseline case. It could, in theory, support a family of four that would have more resources. Their income limit is currently set at just over $77,000, which means their affordable mortgage is $276,000. 20% down payment gets you to $345,000. That is roughly on par with what D.R. Horton is charging for the few two-bedroom units that they build. The big difference here is that, talking to realtors, it is very hard to use any down payment assistance on a D.R. Horton home. And that advertised price often requires you to use D.R. Horton's in-house financing, which income-constrained buyers will have a hard time qualifying for. Plus, most, if not all, of this down payment could be coming from down payment assistance programs, which our partners at HomeSite have a lot of experience with. After closing costs, this is the gross revenue that we are, you know, underwriting the project on for per-sale on our side. And it about comes out in the wash with the two bedrooms being more expensive, so the exact unit mix doesn't really impact project finances, which is, again, why we feel comfortable leaving that up to the market. So now, let's talk a little bit about down payment assistance. The down payment for that one-bedroom, again, is a little over $51,000. The down payment for that two-bedroom is just under $70,000. We understand that this is a lot of money for an income-constrained family, and so there is no expectation that these folks are coming to these deals with that kind of cash in hand. HomeSite often, frequently, has that 20% down payment because it allows them to use conventional Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac loans without any mortgage insurance. So it actually, coming up with that large-sounding down payment through down payment assistance programs, rather than having less down payment, actually makes the house more affordable for the buyers. And let's talk a bit about where these sources are. So about $35,000 can come from Housing Trust Fund-based down payment assistance coming from the Department of Commerce. That's a 3% deferred loan, so it is a loan, but that it is deferred up until the end of the first mortgage, so you're not making payments on it until your first mortgage is paid off. This can be extended to $45,000 on a case-by-case basis. There's additional potential $10,500 down payment program through a HomeSite internal program called Project Reinvest. This is a 0% deferred loan, so you actually don't have to pay any interest on it, and the payments similarly are deferred until after your first mortgage is paid off. This is a revolving loan fund, so whether or not there is money for this in HomeSite's coffers at the time of purchase is just going to depend on what's being recycled at the time, but there's a potential that that could be there. There's also $15,000 per family from the Rural Communities Assistance Corporation, who are going to be our construction lender. We have an LOI from them. They're also a CDFI-like HomeSite, so a nonprofit lender. They have a program called the Capital Management Fund Program, coming, I believe, through Treasury. This is a pass-through grant that has deed restrictions that have to be added, but they are pretty much redundant with the Affordable Housing Covenant that the city is having us put in place. And those are forgiven after 10 years, assuming you do the annual reporting on those, which is fairly minimal if you're not selling your house. Then there is $15,000 from the Home Key Opportunity Program through the Washington State Housing Finance Commission, this is attached to their lending products that HomeSite would be administering, that similarly is a 3% deferred loan. An additional $10,000 if you are a black indigenous person of color borrower, potentially on top of that, also through Housing Finance Commission, and that is another 0% interest deferred loan for to the end. If, for whatever reason, we can't get to the full amount through those sources, HomeSite also has the ability to offer what they call an amortizing second mortgage, up to $70,000. This is actual debt, not the kind of better debt you get with those down payment assistance programs, but for some families that might not qualify for some of these, that gives additional flexibility to basically have them not pay a full 20% while still getting credit for 20% in terms of not needing that mortgage insurance. And again, HomeSite feels comfortable doing this because they really do everything they can to not let families foreclose, so they're not worried about fire sales. They're going to get people kind of that gap coverage until they can sell their house, and, you know, HomeSite's books are maintained. And then finally, these programs, for those folks that are eligible, would be eligible for the Covenant Homeownership Program. This is for folks who either were alive and present in 1968, or the descendants of people who were alive and present in the state before 1968, who would have been excluded from homeownership by racially restricted covenants. That is up to 20% of the home value, so all of our down payment, and that is a 0% deferred loan for the whole thing. So if there are any buyers out there that are eligible for this, HomeSite has experience with this program, we'd be able to use it for these units. Just want to talk very briefly about outreach strategy. You know, full-court press on social media, print media, radio, and TM's an expert on onsite signage, so we'd be looking for permission from the city to do that. But beyond that, we really want to take advantage of how organized Ellensburg is as a community, looking at doing presentations or getting newsletter mentions for the largest employers, from faith groups, of which I believe there are at least 25 in the City of Ellensburg, civic and fraternal organizations, which kind of run the gambit, housing and social service providers, especially the Housing Authority. I understand that they potentially have matched savings programs for some of their residents to could become potential buyers. Realtors, talked to some already, we're going to talk to all of them if we're given the green light, and labor unions, including labor unions from some of the large employers, like the labor unions present on Central's campus, all of which seem like real potential prospective buyers, especially considering that the folks looking for the one-bedrooms, they're not people that are in the market right now. So making sure we get the word out that you can't afford a house right now in the county, but if we can get these built, you will be able to afford these. So then, very briefly, with my last couple minutes, I want to talk about why this project still matters. As I alluded to, one- and two-bedroom sales are a tiny fraction of the market in the City of Ellensburg. This is, the last couple of quarters, you'll notice it's mostly three- and four-bedrooms, handful of two-bedrooms. Notably, that two-bedroom price is right on the money with, about what we're charging. Again, that's not necessarily new construction. And the one-bedroom price is similarly right exactly what we're planning on charging, but it was only four units in the last seven quarters, whereas the bulk of those new units, or bulk of those sales, were three bedrooms. And there's a huge price jump from a two to a three-bedroom in Ellensburg. And when you're looking at that median home price increasing, a lot of that is coming from that big jump. Then thinking about new construction, our argument is that that differential is not from lack of demand, it's from lack of supply. Almost all of the new construction in the last seven quarters has been three- and four-bedrooms. There was one new two-bedroom that came online in that time, and so there's really just not opportunities to buy because developers, as it stands, are not creating those opportunities. Beyond that, it fits the demographic breakdown of Ellensburg. You know, Lily and her team have done a great job outlining a lot of these statistics already about how Ellensburg is primarily one- and two-person households. But beyond just the size, I think it's really interesting to think about the types of folks that would want to live downtown and have a kind of more walkable lifestyle. And so, the American Community Survey also breaks it down based on number of vehicles. There are 500 one-person households with no vehicle, 97 two-person households with no vehicle, and 309 three-person, or 76 three-person households with no vehicle, and then even larger shares with only one vehicle, who, you know, if you're a two-adult household with one vehicle, at some point, somebody's going to want to walk to the grocery store. So we think there's a real opportunity to provide for that demographic in a way that new construction in Ellensburg just currently is not. Then thinking about what the size of the market is, this is a quote from Nicole Priggy Taylor, who's a Realtor, saying that she has about three or four couples or individuals approach her every year, and when they talk through things and talk to a lender, they realize they actually don't have the resources to purchase a home. And she sees that as a subset of what could be a much larger pool. Those are the people that are brave enough to talk, knowing that their resources are limited. So in her, in her opinion, that, you know, there's a real kind of large subset of individuals that feel that buying a home is out of reach and don't even try. This is also an opportunity to do a proof-of-concept for ownership townhomes in Ellensburg, which are explicitly mentioned in the city's housing action plan. There are currently not any examples of them, so this would be not just great for us to prove it works on our own accord, but to prove to banks and other developers that this is a viable model. It's a proof-of-concept for building affordable housing without direct subsidy. I could spend a lot of time talking about this, but a number of the things that go into the typical capital stack for affordable housing development have a huge amount of regulatory and legal oversight that create overhead costs for developers, which is why a lot of affordable housing is so expensive to build. We're able to do this without any subsidy, other than the land from the city and the DPA programs that are eligible to any buyer in the state, and so that keeps our costs low. It's a proof-of-concept for HomeSite. HomeSite can lend to anyone in the community today, but this is an opportunity for them to have a real case study of the work that they do in an organized project, and for us to help them make connections with local organizations. It is the fastest way to realize housing on the site. We realize that this is going to be, depending on whether you count this as the same as Inversions, either the second or third bite at the apple for this. So, you know, in an ideal world, we'd be able to get this deal approved by the end of the year. We're assuming five to nine months for entitlements, 10 months for Phase 1 construction, which would be four or five of the 16 or 17 units, with occupancy being targeted for around July of '27 for that first phase, and then 12 months for Phase 2, which would be the balance, and the full project would be done in July of 2028. And then finally, it's a vote of confidence in our team. As I said, predominantly a local team, with HomeSite being really eager to be present in this community. We want to have this work not just for the sake of the project, because we want to do this kind of work for many years to come. So, you know, a vote yes is a vote for us to keep doing this kind of work. And that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have questions?
I do, but go ahead. I can follow up some of them, if they're probably asked.
Go ahead.
Hi. Nice job.
Thank you.
I like your idea. I don't quite understand all your financing and all the different lending things, but it sounds like a more doable than possibly the Inversion was. We, I think we all realized going into that, there was some risk that that might not work. In terms of the decision that we have to make, I think, I think I would like, I think I would lean toward giving this group a shot at this, instead of going back to another RFP and waiting months and months and months to get that and run the risk of it being something that we don't like, and then we have to start all over again. I like the looks of this development much better than the apartment complex we had the first design. It just was not, it just didn't fit. So I think I would lean in that direction in terms of the decision we have to make.
Was there a question in there?
No.
The financing is really quite simple.
I mean, the question is, I need to understand the financing, but...
I can, I can explain it very quickly. We're getting a construction loan from the Rural Communities Assistance Corporation. It's a nonprofit loan. They only lend to nonprofits or partnerships between nonprofits and for profits. We're the second opponent in that. We're going to be able to keep that one loan open the whole time, and then it just converts on sale. The loans are going to be typical Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac compliant loans that HomeSite is administering, and what they're really good at is that creative down payment assistance part that allows these families of limited means to access what is a very standard loan that, you know, basically, if you're not going FHA, chances are you're going Fannie or Freddie, and they get sold on the secondary market, just like any other loan.
So what's the life of the mortgage? 20 years, 30 years?
30 years, typical 30-year mortgage.
Yeah. Estimate your monthly payment?
So it will be dependent on interest rate, and of course, I'm not going to make any predictions as to exactly what the interest rate is going to be a year from now and two years from now. But if it is what it is today, roughly 6.7% conservatively for a 30-year mortgage, the interest payment would be $13.22 for that family of one and $17.85 for the family of two.
Okay. David?
Thank you. Thanks, Kyler. Appreciate the information. So I share the sentiments of Councilman Goodlow on this. It's an interesting project. I'm trying to get my head around the phasing a little bit, and I'm looking through your submittal, and I'm looking at the schematic, so as near as I can tell, and also the timeline. And I think you've touched on both of those. So from what you've said and what you've provided, it looks like the overall timeline would be, say, from now until 2028, right? Okay. And then I guess, so that suggests it's probably two phases, but could be three phases? Is that...
The goal is to do it in two phases, to keep it really as simple and as streamlined as possible, and to avoid needing to open a second construction loan, which would have additional fees. The goal here is to use some cash equity and the value of the land after an appraisal to get the first phase going, and then to use all the cash from the first phase to roll it into the second phase. It's really just much cleaner to do it that way. So if we can get the 17 units to work with the parking, it would be the five units on First Avenue likely as our first phase, and the 12 units on First and off the alley as the second. If it's 16 units, it would probably be the four units on Pine on the corner there, and then the 12 as the balance.
Sure. So it sounds like the flex is the first phase will be the light part, four, five, or six units you indicate.
It is, and that is a function of the capital we have on hand and keeping our operations light, not bringing a lot of other outside investors.
Understood. So on the timeline, I was trying to anticipate where the, where the breakpoints are potentially, if things don't go exactly the way they're hoped. And I think the comment or that was written here is that, the statement is, in explaining all this, is it sort of along the lines, if we're unable to sell enough units to begin construction of the first phase, the land would revert to the city. And I guess my question is, how many is enough? And how long would, and I realize also, what we're being asked to do is direct staff to prepare an agreement, and the details will be contained. But I guess in terms of your expectations, if Phase 1 is five units, is that, is that the pre-sale number that you need? So that's enough?
So we would want to pre-sell, hopefully, if the first phase is five units, we'd want to pre-sell seven, because those families are going to need to remain qualified for the 10 months of construction. HomeSite is great at holding people's hands through this kind of process, but I understand that things come up. You know, you have a medical emergency, you might not be qualified a month later, even if you qualify when you do the pre-sale. But we would aim to pre-sell as many as we could, and be, being very transparent with the buyers that they might have to wait until the second phase. And then it would be a similar conversation for the second phase, and we'd have to be even more transparent if we were to get above 17 pre-sales, that some folks might have to wait for a subsequent development. The construction lender requires the pre-sale agreement before we can close on the construction loan. They do not have really set terms as to what those look like, so it's going to be a small amount of earnest money that would be held in that row, 500 to 2,000.
Yeah, I think that all sounds right. But I guess what we're going back to is your, your outline said that should the program be approved, structure be approved, breaking ground next year, so 2026. I guess my question is, if for different, all unknown reasons, that doesn't happen, what's the, what's the earliest date that the agreement would be scuttled?
So if...
If it didn't work out as, as you envisioned.
If we cannot be in the ground before, around this time next year, then that likely pushes construction back to the spring, just the function of pouring concrete. I know you can speak more to this, if you want to know the details there. And so, that would be a delay. In terms of, you know, so one of the advantages we have with the kind of joint venture and kind of vertical integration we have with architects and contractors being the equity partners here, we don't have a lot of holding costs on this until we're actually in the ground, making construction draws, right? We don't need this to start cash flowing to pay ourselves. So we have as much time as you'll give us. Granted, we want to get this done because it's been a long time for everybody. So if we can't get the site entitled before November, that is a risk. We're hoping everybody's going to be pulling in the same direction. It shouldn't be too complicated. It is, it's going to be a normal long plat subdivision likely. There's a chance we would break it into a short plat and a long plat, but to make it the first phase go faster, but we think that might actually be adding more complexity than it's worth. If we don't have the pre-sales, that is something that's out of everybody's control. But again, we're hoping that that outreach strategy is robust enough. first phase go faster, but we think that might actually be adding more complexity than it's worth. If we don't have the pre-sales, that is something that's out of everybody's control. But again, we're hoping that that outreach strategy is robust enough to find these folks. We really do think that that demand is out there. And so that would be a potential delay. Again, if we can't make it work and, and the council is tired of waiting, the land could be clawed back at any time.
I was just thinking in terms of, in this I imagine would be a component of the, of the agreement in that there's going to be a performance period.
There will be a performance.
And I imagine the first test will be phase one proof of concept, and that means getting, you know, shovels in the ground, so to speak. So I don't know what that cutoff would be. I don't know, you know, we want to give this a fair chance, obviously, and, you know, it's fine to be optimistic, and everyone wants to be and should be, but I don't, I don't want us to abandon the process too soon, but I also don't want to hold on to it too long, if that makes sense. If things don't, we kind of went through this a few years ago with the Community Land Trust experiment. We didn't, it didn't really cost us anything, but it did take some time and energy. But that's kind of, I guess, you're going to know, I imagine, within the next six to eight months whether there's proof of concept. You've got homeowners ready to
Right. So if we get the green light tonight, we view that as a vote of confidence in it, while we're negotiating the affordable housing agreement and the exact language of the covenant, we would begin our outreach process to buyers, which would run through the whole entitlements process. So we're going to be out there pounding the pavement, talking to people. There will be more renderings and drawings than we prepared for this, and, you know, we're really going to be getting out there. So, yeah, I think if there really aren't buyers the way we think they are, it should be clear pretty quickly. The, you know, contingency scenario is where we have enough buyers in the first phase and we don't end up getting to the total number of buyers. So that's a world where we could consider splitting the second phase into two to keep things moving while we wait for new buyers. In terms of the city's ability to claw back the second phase land after the first phase is completed, the big question there is going to be how much infrastructure is shared between the two phases and how much the city requires us to build out capital improvements to the streets that might require encumbering land beyond the land that sits under the first phase units.
I understand.
To the extent to which we can avoid encumbering it, we actually think that's great. We'd love to put more of the second phase costs on the second phase balance sheet. But if we have to encumber that land, it would be out of our hands. It would be a negotiation between the bank and the city at that point.
Okay. Well, as I said, the details will be in the agreement if we go this way, and I imagine there will be plenty of opportunities to measure progress and then in an ongoing way manage the agreement. So thank you for all that information.
Thank you.
I did have just a couple questions. So you would carry the construction loan. So the buyers would then come in just with the conventional?
They get a conventional mortgage. They're a regular homeowner. There's no rental component to this anymore, so they, HOA is not contracting with a third-party property manager. It's just a regular mortgage. And the big difference between this and kind of any other project is that Homesite is a very active partner in helping people through the whole process and also providing services, again, as part of their mission as a nonprofit, to folks even, even after the fact that they're having a mission.
So what is that pre-sale commitment from your buyers?
It's going to have to be some amount of earnest money. That's going to be a conversation between us and the construction lender. The construction lender is also a nonprofit, also a federally chartered community development financial institution. And so they are not looking to turn the screws on people, but it's just part of how they assess risk for homeownership projects. So there will be some agreement with some good faith money that'll be held in escrow. If it doesn't work out, it will be returned, and that, I believe, would include a situation where someone is qualified at the time of the purchase and sale agreement, becomes unqualified for whatever mitigating reasons in the interim, their earnest money would be returned to them in that case.
And Homesite, does the income qualifying?
They do, yes, as part of compliance with all these state programs that they are so masterful at. And for subsequent buyers, you know, no one, first of all, no one is required to use Homesite as the lender. We're fairly confident they're going to be the best deal they'll find, but you could use any lender for these. The income qualification is going to be pretty simple because it's just what we're agreeing to with the City of Ellensburg. So it's going to be a pay stub, a W-2, and an affidavit saying that both of those things are true, and that's all the title company is going to need to see to clear title, and it's really clearing title that's the enforcement mechanism. There is an open question as to whether that packet is submitted to the city or submitted to some other third party. It is typically in arrangements like this submitted to the municipality. However, we understand that Ellensburg hasn't done this before and might not be interested in doing that. So we're open to looking at other options, whether that would be the HOA, or, you know, I don't know if Homesite has an interest in doing it ongoing, but again, someone has to receive the W-2s and sign to say that they've received them in satisfaction of the covenant, and then that goes to the title company at transaction.
Talk a little bit about your HOA ideas.
So there's going to be an HOA if for no other reason to help. So with a townhome, you own the dirt, you own the house, you share a wall with one or more of your neighbors. The HOA can help kind of adjudicate what capital improvements on those shared walls look like and the shared roofs for all the buildings that are attached. They will also maintain the common areas, but this is going to be a much, much, much more conventional HOA than what Inversion was talking about previously. It's really going to be some amount that's going to cover their expenses. We don't have a full pro forma for the HOA yet, but there are assumptions based on some reasonable guesses from market research that's built into what we're saying these families can afford, that's, that's built into that, you know, no more 30% of your income towards, or 38% rather for ownership, towards housing costs. So there will be an HOA payment. The HOA is self-governing just like any other. So, you know, folks could make changes to the HOA. They cannot make changes to the affordability covenant, right? That's baked into the deed. So if they want to turn around and sell this to somebody else, they have to get another 80% AMI income qualified buyer for 51 years. That's the life of the covenant, at least as it stood as we were negotiating last year. I don't think we're assuming that's changing.
So are you going to go out and find a company to be the HOA, or how's that going to work?
So there are companies that do professional HOA management. I don't think we've made a determination about whether or not that makes sense. Ultimately, anything we set up, it is up to the owners after we sell the last unit, whether or not they want to keep it. Either way, so if we think it makes sense to do it, or if we're taking some of the organizational responsibility on ourself to begin with, those could both be options. You know, we haven't really vetted the, the kind of cost and ramifications for those, but in either case, ultimately, like any other HOA, it is the owners that get to decide. The HOA bylaws will stipulate threshold votes for amending the HOA, the way it works. If the city has strong feelings about that, we can make it harder to amend, though there are state laws that govern how hard it can be to amend. So it has to comply with state laws.
Thanks.
Any more questions?
Good.
Now's public comment. If you, yeah, if you would like to make a, anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the issue can approach. Mr. Coleman.
Hello, William Coleman, resident of Kititas. This is kind of a question. I didn't keep up with everything that was presented here on this tonight, but it sounds like you have some in-house financing available for applicants, or they can go do private mortgage loans on this, correct?
So you have, you need to come to the, so all the questions come to us?
I'll just state my concern then.
And we'll ask?
We all saw in 2008 and '09 the damage that happened with folks on variable interest rates on mortgages. This is a low-income project. These people are going to be living paycheck to paycheck, and they're not going to handle a balloon payment in the future if something bad goes on in the economy. My thought is, is that bake into it that fixed rates only for the applicants. Thank you.
Skylar, did you want to speak to the?
Sure, yeah. So again, we're not going to be able to stipulate that buyers use any particular lender. So, you know, their ability to go out and pick any lender they want with or without a fixed rate is, is up to them. But the financing we would be offering through our development partner, Homesite, who is a home loan lender themselves, and Uche Phil, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they are all very standard fixed-rate 30-year mortgages?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, they are.
Yep. And similarly, you know, Homesite, even though they will be selling those mortgages on the secondary market, it's not like you never talk to your mortgage originator again. Homesite's not going anywhere. They want to be involved in the community, and so their services for financial counseling and foreclosure prevention continue beyond that resale.
The term for a forability, 20 years, 30 years, 40 years?
It's 51 years is what the city requested previously?
I thought I read that, okay.
We don't have a strong opinion about it because, again, once we sell them all, that doesn't directly impact us. But as I understand it, the city does not want to commit future generations to continuing to maintain compliance beyond that window.
Thanks.
I think we asked this question in the original presentation. Maybe I asked it, I can't remember, but in the sort of, I hate to be the doom and gloom, but the first, the worst-case scenario in a foreclosure situation, the bank holding the loan would be subject to the same covenants. In other words, when they're trying to resell a property that they came into possession of, they would be limited to the same income restrictions
That is correct.
That the open market would.
Yes. So the foreclosure explicitly doesn't, or the covenant explicitly does not prevent foreclosure. If it did, no bank would lend, but it does hold the banks to exactly the same standards for those 51 years. And again, Homesite really works to make sure that these properties don't go into foreclosure. They've got some funding sources to provide gap grants and really try to identify buyers early on, or before foreclosure becomes necessary. And then I think the other point of flexibility, given that this is a smaller market, is that we are requesting that the covenant does allow the homes to be sold to a nonprofit affordable housing rental provider, just to provide another potential buyer for these on the market. This would be both a contingency for us. Obviously, we'd rather sell directly to homeowners, but it also just provides opportunities for this first generation of buyers to have another potential seller. We would be keeping the same language that was in the Inversion agreement that would say that if it's owned by, you know, a nonprofit, they would have to rent it out to 80% AMI renters. And, you know, those nonprofits have their own income qualification methods already built in.
Actually, you prompted one other thought I had. I know it's not a very likely scenario, but it could conceivably be a situation where the homeowner at some point experiences some serious significant financial distress, and perhaps the, I guess my question is, are, I know these are not designed to be rental units, but if, if we have an original homeowner who's qualified and received the loan and runs into a scenario where they can no longer afford to live in the home, but they don't want to sell it or have it foreclosed, is there a prohibition on rental?
So not as currently written. And again, part of that was the kind of unique nature of the previous agreement where there were always going to be some rental properties, and we felt more confident in saying, well, there's going to be a mechanism for income qualification for all the renters anyways. And so if someone doesn't want to be an owner occupant anymore, they could elect to rent it out and they would have to be income qualified. I think now that there's not going to be that embedded income qualification infrastructure for renters, it may make sense to consider a prohibition on non-owner occupants and renting out on the open market, except for the case where it's being managed by a nonprofit that already has income qualification processes in place. You can find examples that go either way. Again, we don't feel strongly about it one way or the other.
If I may say, if the buyer has down payment assistance, then it has to be owner occupied. They're not allowed to rent.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak, Mr. Kelleher?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Looks like an interesting project. I don't have any problem with the project. The city is participating at 17 units. You're participating at $58,000 per unit. If the property can be leaned against, you need to follow Washington State labor laws. The, my concern, first of all, is going from what the applicant wrote. No agreement has been signed yet. Okay? No agreement's been signed yet. My comments are mute. If I interpret this wrong, Inversion Design Bill needed to wind down its operation. So I'm interpreting that, that the person that's going to ink the contract is not Inversion. They've left the building. The, what I want to do is speak to fairness and process. Okay, you RFP'd. Couple applicants applied. It was reviewed, it went to the process. You awarded the contract, or you awarded the land subject to contract. So now you're opening up a process that doesn't exist. So I'm going to RFP your next thing, have a nice little shiny coin for you, and then I'm going to flip it to someone else. That's a possibility. I, I really think you need to RFP this again. It's a good project. It should win in competition. But they weren't, they, they didn't meet the application date. And now they're in front of you going, no, we want to ink a contract. How's that fair to the people that took the time to reply timely, prepare a proposal to your guidelines? And what's that say for future RFPs? It's a big concern. I just want to make sure that all four of you are aware of that, that you're proposing to approve agreement going, you know, to ink a contract with somebody that's never RFP'd under your proposal. I think that's a big door.
Thank you, Mr. Kelleher. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this project? Okay. Counsel?
We probably want a motion for discussion, but I, I think it would be helpful to get, and I've communicated this internally, I'd like, I'd like Mr. Kelleher's comment about the appropriateness or legality. I think it's a question for our city attorney. I've been told that everything has been reviewed and there's no issue involved, but I'd like to hear it. I think the public would probably like to hear it. As far as the process, how we're adhering to our RFP process, whether that opens any questions, as Mr. Kelleher alluded to.
Yeah, I think that's the question that staff has been grappling with as well. Is this a continuation of the Inversion process, which was, we were in the contract process and there was negotiation going along? Or is this, do you open it up for RFP again? I think there's paths both ways, and that's the judgment call for a counsel to make. I think both paths are open.
So, so if half of the staff of Inversion is now, is still in the project, it's, it doesn't seem like new, totally new people to me. It seems like that, I mean, if, I don't know, if Johnson &amp; Johnson buys, I can't, I can't think of some other pharmaceutical company, they're still the same company.
Correct. Corporate restructuring happens and the projects continue. And so that, I think, is, goes towards, yes, this would be a continuation of the prior project and could be characterized as such.
It's, it's not entirely just a remake of, I mean, Inversion, but, or a buyout, but at, at any rate. Did you want to?
Yeah, please.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I was interested in that, so be interested to hear.
I'll make a motion.
I move to direct staff to prepare revised Affordable Housing Agreement for amended proposal.
I'll second.
Motion and second to direct staff to prepare a revised Affordable Housing Agreement for the amended proposal. Discussion?
So if I understand counsel and we do this, is there a risk that somebody will come along and sue us because we didn't do another R F P process?
I think there are risks with whatever you do. That is always a risk.
We, we don't have, I mean, does, there's no code or anything that says we have to do an R F P process, is there?
I didn't.
It's my understanding that the surplus land enabling legislation does not require an R F P process at all and gives counsel wide latitude to dispose of land as they see fit. There are a number of reasons why we cannot legally be a successor to Inversion as a company. However, if it would make everyone more comfortable to have a letter that formally transfers the award from Nathan Poehl, who accepted it on behalf of Inversion to the new company, we can definitely make that happen. We're still on very good terms with him. He just doesn't live in Washington State anymore.
Okay. Thank you. We'll see what we need to do.
So we could, we could vote to move forward with this and then work out, work out the details.
Yeah, the term that comes to mind for me is, we often use it, and I wouldn't claim it as a legal pretext, but in the words, in substantially similar form, you know, we often use that when we're trying to get to this. And it strikes me that this reformulated organization is a similar organization with many of the same people. And I have no choice but really to, to accept the guidance from the attorney on the law. And it sounds like there may be a couple of different things where there's significant counsel judgment in here, involved. I, I do, I'm sensitive to the R F P process because that's how I make my living. And I have been involved in situations where companies change hands after selections are made. And it always seems a little bit suspect. And this isn't exactly the same thing because, one, there's no agreement, you know? And the core team players are the same, so I can, I see that, so. But I do, just, I do have some concern about the precedent that it might, might appear to set about the city issuing an R F P, R F Q, making a selection, and then having that be, as it was said, flipped.
As I recall, there was two proposals that responded to the, the R F Q and the other being Hope Source, which was an entirely different model with, with a lot of state and federal grants, as I recall. And I guess, I guess I'm not clear, and Lily, if you want to comment, the, the, who else is out there that might submit an R F, a proposal?
Yeah, we can't say for sure who would respond to an R F P if it were reissued for the site. We did have two proposals in that initial suggestion. And to your point, there are some similarities between the current proposal and the original accepted. But yes, we can't speak to that specifically.
And I would just add that we, we sat down together prior to this project coming to the Affordable Housing Commission to make that determination. And there was, there were advantages for, one, doing another request for proposals, and then also advantages to continuing down this pathway. It's taken us a long time to get here, and I know folks have worked really hard to try to exhaust options to make that project successful. So that's why we brought it to the Affordable Housing Commission to advise on the pathway. Again, the, there is a legal pathway to do this, but it really is ultimately up to counsel on the pathway you'd like to choose.
How, what kind of a setback would it be if we sent it out for an R F?
Might.
Our last R F P process was about a month, well, it was several months to prepare, at least a month for applications, and then review of those questions to each applicant. Submitted that to the Affordable Housing Commission at least a week before their meeting, and then their recommendation then to counsel. So probably looking at two to three months minimum.
I guess there's also the question whether, and, you know, I'm just saying this, whether this is the kind of decision that a full council should make versus four members of the council? I, I don't know. I don't know that it's that, you know, that significant in terms of four versus seven, but it's something to think about.
The Affordable Housing Commission was unanimous in, in its recommendation and.
They were. Yes, they echoed some of your, your comments on appreciation for the thoroughness and presentation by the applicants. And we're very encouraged by the kind of continuously innovative approach to a solution for this site.
I have no problem with who, who this would go to. I'm just, it's the legal part of it that I'm concerned about, that we didn't put it out there.
Yeah, I would.
Well, that's something, I mean, if we, if we support the motion and we start the process and we find out we can't do it, then we can, then we can start all over.
I think there's a path to move forward if that's what counsel wants to do with the contract. And for the reasons that we've talked about, that R F P wasn't required in the first place, and there's a very much a continuation of the same project, which we were in the middle of contract negotiations with, I think there's a path forward if that's what counsel wants to do.
Yeah, I, I think there are advantages to this, to continuing. I, I think HomeSite intrigues me, and having, and having HomeSite establish what they do with education and mentoring and, and all of that in the community is, is attractive to me. So did we get a motion and second?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I would also echo the, the comment about, I think we do have to lean on our boards and commissions, our, our experts in the field, and the unanimous recommendation is, is significant. And I think with that, paired with our legal evaluation, I feel like I'm, I'm comfortable also going forward.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye opposed, motion carries. And we are at 11B, Third Quarter 2025 Financial Status and Investments Report. Second to the last item.
We'll get there. Maybe. Jerika always takes a long time to go through.
It's way past my bedtime. I'm not used to this time change yet either, so.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
It's going to catch up.
It's because it's 10:30 body time.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I did say that. I was manly trying to ignore that.
That was a great, I mean, the other thing I like about, I have a lot of confidence in Skylar and his background and his abilities, so.
Good evening, counsel. Jerika Pasmo again, City of Ellensburg's Finance Director. Beginning on page 326 of your agenda is the Third Quarter 2025 Financial Status and Investment Reports for the period ending September 30th of 2025. The third quarter reports were presented to the Finance Committee at the October 16th meeting. Beginning on page one of the report here, we have the typical general fund chart that shows the actual expenditures and revenues in blue, the year-end projections in red, and the budget in green. Third quarter projections were made as of the current situation on 10/14 of 2025. General fund revenues are expected to come in above budget and expenditures are expected to come in below budget as required. Budgeted expenditures reflect all adjustments that were taken to counsel for approval through September 2nd of 2025. Table 2 shows the year-to-date revenue remitted from the State of Washington sales tax activities. So, or State of Washington, yeah, sales tax activities. So overall, for the first three quarters of 20, or the first, yeah, three quarters of 2025, we see a 26% increase over third quarter of 2024, or $2.4 million increase. We talked about this in my previous presentations. Majority of this increase, if not all of it, is from, due to sales tax. So you can see on majority of these increases, the sales tax, housing and related services, a 35% increase. Public transportation saw a 35% tax increase, a regular sales tax, 34%, and public safety, a 15% increase. We do have a few decreases there, including the hotel motel lodging taxes started to turn around and take a decrease, as well as liquor excise taxes and the marijuana excise tax. Here we have, overall governmental fund tax revenue is projected to exceed our budget by approximately 4.1 million or 20.26%. This is comparing our projections to budget instead of the previous chart that was comparing year over year. Majority of that, again, is in sales tax. We budgeted conservatively for sales tax. We've seen those huge increases in construction sales tax that I talked about earlier that has raised our projection for year end. We're also expected to see a higher projection in our B and O sales tax, or B and O tax, which is, majority of it is utility tax of about 18%. And then other taxes include leasehold and other excise taxes like hotel motel. And again, this budget was created in 2024, and we budgeted really conservatively. So you will be seeing a budget adjustments for a bunch of these revenues come before you in the next council meeting. Table 4 shows your retail sales tax breakdown by purpose. So when we talk about the projection of over 3.2 million over budget, not all of that is, is with regular retail, which is not restricted. A lot of that is with our restricted sales tax, such as the public transit, public safety, affordable housing. However, 2.28 million of that is in our regular retail sales tax that we use for all of our general government. Public transit is expected to come in around a half a million dollars over budget, and housing is expected to come in around 280,000 over budget. And I'll talk about the detail on this next page here, where this all comes from. So like I spoke about before, overall, the sales tax is up almost 40% compared to third quarter of 2024. Retail trade has the highest dollar decrease, with construction showing the highest dollar increase. Professional and scientific and tech services also have a significant and the highest percentage increase overall. So we saw around a $650,000 increase almost for professional, scientific, and tech services, which a lot of that is architectural, engineering-type services too, as well as robotics were in there. And then overall, construction, we've seen over a million dollar increase compared to third quarter of last year. Retail trade, which I've talked about before, really gives us a better idea of how our local economy is doing with this. And inflation is actually down 2.5% compared to third quarter of. So that's why we continue to say we want to make sure that we pull out this construction sales tax and these other ones and use them for one-time services. We want to make sure that we don't, for example, someone is to get a birthday gift from a grandparent of money and they turn around and put it on a down payment of a car, not thinking about that they're going to have continuous loans. That's what we try to budget and keep in mind when we're doing so. This, this construction sales tax is significant that we've seen here. It's putting us in a really good position, especially compared to what most cities are looking at this year. But we will be coming forward with some recommendations for counsel on areas where we may use some of that construction sales tax within this next budget year. The next chart is our year-to-date utility tax activity. Overall, that's leveled out to around 2.9% increase over 2025. Water, gas, sewer, and electric, those typically go up and down, like we talked about previously. A lot of them are weather-dependent and cost-dependent, and they will go up and down depending on our utility customers and when they're able to pay. Also, with our new utility billing system, it has a, it has a order in which when somebody makes a partial payment, where they're applied first, which would be water and sewer applied before gas and light. So that's going to show, and because this is on cash basis and outstanding receivables are not included in these revenues here, that's why you see such a difference in the, between the different utilities there. Telephone tax has continued to decrease, which we've talked about will decrease until it's no more, as well as cable tax. We saw a large jump in gambling tax, and that was a payment on some late previous gambling tax debt. And then, of course, garbage tax has continued to increase due to rates and additional customers, I'm assuming. It was up 12.5% at the end of quarter two, so they have leveled out more, and we're expecting them to be pretty level by year end compared to last year. Table 7 shows our overall general fund expenditures. So this is a little bit more detail from the original chart on page one. So overall, we're expected to come in about 1.5% above budget for revenue, majority of that being in taxes, like we talked about before. We budgeted conservatively, utility taxes, B and O taxes. And this does not include the sales tax reserve fund or the other managerial funds of the general fund. So this does not include sales tax, but it does include those other B and O and other taxes. License and permits is coming in above due to some of the large construction projects we've had. Charges for fees and services is up as well. And then miscellaneous is up over budget quite a bit due to interest that we've earned on our investments. We're also projecting to come in under budget by almost 2.7 million in the general fund, leaving us with, our projections leaving us with an increase to fund balance at year end of around 1.8 million. As far as table eight, which shows our debt activities, we don't, haven't had any debt changes in third quarter. You'll see for fourth quarter reporting, you'll see a, a change there because we make most of our principal payments on our geo debts in November. And then this last page, this table shows the revenues and expenditures, shows that the city has brought in approximately 10 million more than it spent through third quarter of 2025. Three million of that excess revenue over expenditures is from the utility and internal service funds, and around 2.87 million of that is in the general fund, including the managerial funds that are highlighted there in blue. Majority of that, those remaining amounts are due to the construction, the Fieldhouse Construction Fund, which was the, our last insurance payment on the racket and wreck center, as well as our public transit and criminal justice tax funds. And then for investments, at the end of third quarter, the city had around 91.1 million currently invested. 68.7 of that we had in the LGIP, or the Local Government Investment Pool, which was earning a rate of around 4.29% at the end of September. Our interest earned in September was around 295,000. Overall, through third quarter, we've earned around 2.6 million in interest. Staff recommends the council accept the financial status and investment. Staff recommends the council accept the financial status and investment report as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Counsel, do you have questions?
I do not.
I don't.
No? Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak regarding the third-quarter financial status? Seeing no one, is there a motion?
I move to accept the third-quarter 2025 financial status and investment report as presented.
Second.
Motion and second to accept the third-quarter 2025 financial status and investment reports as presented. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I, I also vote aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we are at 11C. This is the BPA Provider of Choice Contract. Page 338. Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Council. Buddy Stanovich, Energy Services Director. For you tonight is consideration, staff recommends authorizing the mayor to sign the Provider of Choice Contract with the Bonneville Power Administration. This current, or the Provider of Choice Contract replaces the current contract, which is referred to as the Regional Dialogue Contract. That expires September of 2028. Bonneville sent us this for consideration on September 8. And we've had, spent quite a bit of time reviewing, reviewing this. This Provider of Choice Contract secures power and transmission services to meet the city's total electric load needs from 2028 to 2044. Staff believes this maintains the lowest risk and complexity of the three options provided. A couple of, well, let me back up a bit. We've had both our trade associations, the Western Public Agencies Group and the Northwest Requirements Utilities, they were heavily involved in development of this contract and were keeping us informed. Both have reviewed and recommended the city sign this. Furthermore, the NRU Group did a deeper dive into Ellensburg's specific contract and confirmed it was what it was intended to be. We went out and sought guidance from outside council, Cable Houston, their, our contract law firm that is helping us develop the rates for WinCo, just to confirm that it, any impacts that a large customer may have on this contract, they recommend signing as well. It was brought to the Utility Advisory Committee, who recommended the motion tonight. That is all I have, unless there are questions.
Are there questions?
So, you're on UAC.
Yes.
Tell us about their discussion.
Part of the discussion was around the flexibility, past BPA contracts, including the existing one, don't allow the, the city to, it counts against us if we generate more power or use another out, contract with someone else, and, and this contract provides more flexibility for that sort of thing. So, especially with regards to the CCA requirements and, and how, how we're going to get to, how we're going to meet those, we'll need, we'll need to think about some, using some of that flexibility in the future. Does that summarize?
Yeah, I would agree. I think Bonneville's customers had those concerns with previous contracts, and I believe they listened to that, to them in the development of this one, and it provides quite the flexibility that, that we've seen in previous contracts.
So if we wanted to do battery storage, or, you know, whatever new technology might be available to, to cover, well, for, for greater reliability, the BPA has, has contracts with the Western Regional Alliance and others to, to share power and, and trade, but, you know, their, you know, grid reliability and, you know, the changing demand for, for power has all, you know, it's all up in the air, but it's changing rapidly, and, and so I think Ellensburg, you know, in terms of resiliency and reliability and, and just cost might, I mean, BPA is going to be the cheapest, but, but if we want to cover, you know, if there was a fire and one of the transmission lines went down, what are we going to do, that sort of thing? We, you know, we need to, to think about doing, doing something other than BPA as well as what they provide. So, I mean, those, those were the kinds of discussions that we were having at UAC.
And I think we'll probably continue to have.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
But it is, yeah, BPA contracts are very complicated.
Yeah, I couldn't ask a question if I wanted to. It's just amazing. Well, I move to authorize the mayor to sign the Provider of Choice Contract with the Bonneville Power Administration.
Second.
Motion and second to authorize the mayor to sign the Provider of Choice Contract with the Bonneville Power Administration. I'm going to back up. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak to this issue? How about online? Okay, seeing no one. Counsel, is there a discussion about the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
I too vote aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Buddy.
Yes, thank you.
We are at the manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Low question, council members. Heidi Barrett Sturtevant, City Manager. In the manager's report, just a reminder that we do have the Racer Creek Levy ribbon-cutting ceremony this Friday at 9:00 a.m. at the Levy. If folks are going to join us, please park on Enterprise Way, so you're off of Dollar Way, and we'll have just a short ceremony. This is a project that's taken almost two decades to complete, and it'll be great to spend a little time celebrating on that. Just a note to council, I've had conversations with most folks, talking about how we do budgeting for the next biennium, and it's kind of frightening, we're already starting to talk about that. I would like to get started early in 2026. We have some budget discussions to have, and there's just a tremendous amount of misunderstanding about the, the city's budget, how we budget, how much money we have, and, and so this is, I'd like to propose doing a different model of budgeting, a methodology that's called priority-based budgeting. And so this sort of breaks apart what we've done and looks at how much money we have, and then looks at the real cost of running the programs that we do. So we'll have discussions throughout the year. We will bring some support on board, a former finance director from another community that's done this before to help guide us, and, and you all will be pretty deeply involved in budget discussions throughout the year, as well as we likely will have an ad hoc committee of folks in the community that are financially-minded, that can help advise the council, and we'll do some other surveys and, and make sure that we are talking about our priorities as well. So, so lots to come with that. I think it'll be a good and timely methodology to use for budgeting, and I think folks will have a deeper understanding of our city budget, which is quite complex by the time we get to the end, so. And just a couple of notes on the comprehensive plan. I know at your last meeting, we had discussions about what to do with Chapter Nine. That has moved through, so there are some minor amendments that are being made to Chapter Nine. The next stop is the Planning Commission, and that, their public hearing is actually November 13th, which is already 10 days away. And, and so all of that information will continue to be posted online. The amended chapter will be online, and we'll share that out with you all as well. And the idea was to make some near-term changes to that chapter, and to make sure we continue to stay compliant with all the changing federal guidelines, and so, and then following council's direction to work on a deeper community engagement about the goals and the language into the next, next year as part of the periodic update. And so, and in addition, we are looking at working on some code changes to our city code, Chapter 1.88, which is our DEI Commission chapter, and making some minor changes to that, which will come to you hopefully before the end of the year. I wanted to address, I know there's some folks that talked about the pool, and I was wishing that we would have had, used some different language in responding to Mr. Kelleher. So, a few things that have been done to the pool since our, our study session early, or I think it was in August. So when we did our pool closure, our new facilities maintenance person was able to go and do some patching on the cedar shingles on top. So if you look at it today, it looks very different, and so, the last rain, we did not have any, to our knowledge, we didn't have any, any drops on the inside. We also, council, you also made some amendments and funded through the budgeted, the most current supplemental budget, some design money. We have to go through a consultant selection process, and that process has begun, and so that will take some time, and that will, that's to do the engineering and design for the new pool roof on the slant, and then the goal would be to do that construction in 2026. And so those dollars were set aside, and those were funded through the REIT, too. And also a reminder that we actually had the HVAC system replaced, because we can't occupy the building unless we keep, make sure it's functional. And so the flat roof, I believe, is, if they haven't done it already, it's in, in process. This, I think this, maybe it was last week already, so. So again, a number of steps already enacted to make sure we're protecting the port roof and, and into the future here. And then, two more items. One, you have a proposed statement on the dais tonight. Mayor Elliott had requested, because of the federal shutdown, that council make a statement really supporting our local nonprofits, making sure that we're considering local funding, especially during periods of suspended federal benefits. And so he proposed some language. We worked on that, I shared that out, and if council's interested in making a statement really encouraging community members to give locally to, and we have a wonderful support network of nonprofits that help our neighbors and, and making sure that people, wherever they're comfortable and can afford to, are thinking locally. So, if council wants to take some action on that tonight, we can actually release that formally.
Counsel, do you want the statement to go out from the council, or the, the mayor under his personal?
Well, it's either or, I think, from my perspective. I think the wording is fine, so.
What, what did you say, David?
I, it doesn't matter to me if it's a statement from the mayor or from the entire council. Mayor represents the council effectively, so it's one and the same, in my opinion, so.
Yeah, I think, I think it's stronger coming from the council, though. So, I mean.
So we need a motion just to do that, or can we just say yes?
Directive?
If you all are supportive of it, even with a poll, I think that would be sufficient.
All in favor, say.
All in favor, say aye.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's, I think it's, it's appropriate, and it's, it's well-written.
Excellent. All right. And lastly, we do have an executive session on the schedule for this evening, and I would say 10 seconds, excuse me, 10 minutes.
10 seconds.
I will be brief. 10 minutes with no action after.
Okay. So we are adjourning to executive session.
Do you want to, do you want to do council member reports first?
Oh, do you want to do council member, does any, do you have anything?
I got nothing, just downtown.
Go really quick.
Trick or treating was amazing, that's all I got to say.
Yeah, trick or treating.
Yeah, that was, yeah, it was, real quick, finance, I got double dose of what we heard tonight from Jerika, and it, it never gets old. Attended the Transportation Advisory Committee, formerly known as PTAC, which in the future may be known as ETAC, because somebody decided TAC wasn't exciting enough, so E, as in Ellensburg Transportation. And then, I attended the Planning Commission Study Session to prepare for the November 13th public hearing. It's a good conversation, really good staff presentation there. And then, later this week, I'm getting to run over to Spokane, I'm going to do a day-long training session on land use and wildfires in Washington, so I'm really interested to see how that, how that plays out.
Nancy, do you have anything?
I was just going to say, at the Homeless Affordable Housing Committee meeting today, the board, the commission sent the tenure plan to the Board of Commissioners. They have put it on the agenda for approval on December 16th at that, at that meeting, so that's going through, and we're going to have that work done, so.
Congratulations, that's a lot of work. It is a lot of work, having done this.
That's been.
It's a big lift.
Very long time. Okay, so adjourning to executive session to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would likely cause an increased price. Okay. We will return in 10 minutes. Okay.